We're just gonna wait just one minute. Trusty Webster is parking the car, so I was told.
You told me that, right?
Somebody told me that. Just give me one. Okay, all right, well, one minute passed by really quick. Okay, so let's go to one. Oh, no, what am I doing? Okay, good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, October 4th, 2022, and it is the regular board meeting for the Adelanto Elementary School District. Okay, 1.0002, call to order. The time is now 5:31. I'm trying to go slow. It's okay. 1.03, roll call and quorum establishment.
Trusty Akas?
Present.
Trusty La French?
La French, present.
Trusty Webster?
Webster, present.
Trusty Benz?
Benz, present.
And I'll take note that Trusty Turner is not here.
Okay, going on to 1.04, pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready to be begin. Thank you. Okay, going on to adoption of the agenda. 2.01, proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business.
Madam President, I do have a couple. We're adding item 3.02. We will have also a presentation from Victoria McGathen. Principal Alex Verduzco and his staff will be presenting tonight. Also, we are pulling item 14.04. That is under consent agenda. Academic Services Approval of the Agreement with Paly Institute for Gus Franklin Science Camp for 2022-23 school year. And also, Trusty Turner will be joining us in closed session via Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Okay, going on to four, closed session declarations.
Madam President, I'm sorry, adoption of the agenda.
I'm sorry. You're right. I just skipped on by. Okay, 2.002, adoption of the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Akas, I motion.
And can I get a second? Webster, a second. Please call for the vote.
Trusty Webster?
Aye.
Trusty La French?
Aye.
Trusty Akas?
Aye.
Trusty Benz?
Benz, aye. Motion passes for zero. Thank you. Okay, now going on to three special recognitions. Mr. Kraus?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board and community that are with us in person this evening and those of you that are out there in the land of Zoom. We appreciate you joining us this evening. First presentation, we'd like to call it Mr. Ramon Rizzo, the principal of Adelanto Elementary School, who will be presenting on 9/11, and he has some special guests with him that will be assisting him in this. So, Mr. Rizzo, if you can come on up to the podium and we will get you connected over at IT there with the presentation.
Can I scoot this back? Oh, can you hear me? Okay, good evening, Adelanto Elementary School Board. Good evening, and President and Superintendent and Cabinet. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. My name is Ramon Rizzo, the principal for Adelanto Elementary School. And we just recently did our annual 9/11 event over at our site. It was fortunately this year, it was in person. So, we're excited about that. And for those of you that were present there, thank you very much. Trusty Akas and Webster, thank you so much for being there. And Superintendent, and thank you very much, Ms. Benz, for being there as well. I do have some students here with me. Before I start the presentation, we have Ezra Gutierrez here. We have... Oh, and I'm sorry, Ohanya is a very unique name. Ohanya is here tonight, and also we have Leila here tonight, okay? So, they're gonna have a part of the presentation where they read. So, what I'm gonna do is go over a few slides with you and kind of explain what our process is and how our event has been going through the years. It's kind of a school tradition now. So, it's been, I believe this year was the eighth year of our 9/11 presentation onsite. Even during COVID, we did do a virtual presentation. So, that's part of what I'm gonna show you today because obviously we're not there. But we're very excited to be continuing that tradition at our school. So, if you don't mind, we're just gonna get started, okay? So, AES 9/11 Day of Remembrance, our eighth annual on campus. So, here are a few pictures of some of our previous events and this year's event. So, it's a big, big deal on our campus. The students spend a lot of time with artwork. They write letters to local first responders. Obviously, we have special guests that come by. So, it's kind of a big deal on our site, the 9/11 Day of Remembrance. We have the color guard. So, Lieutenant Colonel Cook was onsite from Victor Valley. No, actually, he's from Riverside Prep, I believe. And he was onsite with a color guard as well. So, it was a big event. Lots of patriotism in the air. So, let's go to the next slide. So, once again, there's Lieutenant Colonel Cook right there with his color guard. And at this time, obviously, our pledge of allegiance. Next slide. So, September 11th, once again, is Day of Remembrance for our school site. Not only, obviously, at our school site, but across the country. And so, what we do is we start talking about how we will never forget. And we just kind of reiterate that phrase because it's true. We will never forget. Okay, next slide. And so, from our lower grades kindergarten all the way to fifth grade, students participate in singing. Couple of the favorite songs that they sing, obviously, is the Star Spangled Banner, Yankee Doodle. And like I said, it's a very, very patriotic event. And the kids just really eat it up. They just love it. Next one. So, throughout the years, we've had some very, very special guests. Besides, of course, you guys, we've had the county fire chief show up. One year, we had the county, Mr. Lovinggood, the county supervisor show up. We've had VFW. We've had, obviously, our local fire department, our local sheriff's department. So, we've hosted lots of great folks at each one of our events. Next slide. So, here is where we're gonna begin our timeline. And I have students that are gonna begin with the timeline. So, Ezra?
Timeline, September 11, 2001. At 8:46 AM Eastern Time, American Airlines Flight 11 traveling from Boston to Los Angeles strikes the North Tower of World Trade Center in New York City. At 9:03 AM Eastern Time, United Airlines Flight 175 traveling from Boston to Los Angeles strikes the South Tower of the World Trade Center in New York City. At 9:37 AM Eastern Time, American Airlines Flight 77 traveling from Dulles, Virginia to Los Angeles strikes the Pentagon Building in Washington. At 9:59 AM Eastern Time, South Tower of World Trade Center collapses in approximately 10 seconds.
At 10:03 AM Eastern Time, United Airlines Flight 93 traveling from Newark, New Jersey to San Francisco crashes in a field near Shanksville, Pennsylvania. At 10:28 AM Eastern Time, North Tower of World Trade Center collapses in the time between the first attack and the collapse of both World Trade Centers was 1 hour and 42 minutes.
Right, thank you. Next slide. Excellent job, guys. So, we do talk about, in this presentation, we do talk about the devastating loss of life. So, total 2,753 people at the World Trade Center are killed. 184 people are killed at the Pentagon, and 40 people are killed in Pennsylvania. Next slide. So, what I do to try to kind of bring the event a little bit closer to home, we read off some names of our local folks that were part of, and unfortunately, were killed that day. So, we have several names on here. For example, Alan Bevan, he's from Oakland. Yania Betru from Burbank. Carolyn Buig from Santa Monica. So, just to kind of, so that the kids can understand that it really affected folks from all over the country and all over the world. Next slide. So, as part of our presentation, we do the address from President George Bush that addressed the nation that night, that very night of 9/11. And so, we play part of that presentation. Also, the fireman moment of silence as well. So, you know, a student with about 260, a school with about 260 kids, and of course, all of our staff and our PTA. So, the quad area is filled with folks. And during the moment of silence with the bell from the fire department, I mean, you can't hear a pin drop. It is the most quiet thing, and the kids are very, very respectful during that moment. Next slide. So, obviously, the devastation from 9/11 was real and horrific. But there is the Freedom Tower that represents what is there now. And the height of it is 1776. So, if you know your American history, you know what 1776 is. So, the height from the bottom, although to the top of the tower, and that includes the antenna, is 1,776 feet. Next slide. So, once again, our kids get really into artwork. And like I said, they write letters to first responders. They do very patriotic posters. We love you. We miss you. We will never remember. We see the heroes. And once again, when we have our first responders there visiting, it just makes everything extra special. Next slide. I think that's it. I think that's it. So, that's our 9/11 presentation.
Okay, Board, can we go take a picture with our group and the twin towers, please? Hey, Board, do you have any comments?
Oh, I just want to say that that is just awesome. I think it's great that we're remembering this and we're teaching the kids to remember it. I'm not gonna get all emotional, but it is beautiful, and just thank you.
Trusty La French?
I want to say I appreciate and thank the students who are their parents bringing their parents tonight.
I always forget. I want to thank the students and the students' parents for making sure that, you know, they got here tonight to be able to show and to express what they've learned and how well they speak, you know, at the point. I'm so proud of them. Anytime our students get up and they're not fearful and they just get up and they, you know, just speak from, you know, their heart. You can tell that, you know, that the teachers have worked with them. I appreciate it. I walked through the, I was like, oh, my God. There are a full house here tonight. I think the parents voted for taking the timeout in order to support and bring your students here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I want to start by telling Mr. Rizzo, thank you so very much. I think taking the moment to remember significant events like this is a very important part of education. It allows us to not only learn history, but also be a part of it. As for this amazing display, I got to see it at the actual event. And I do have to back Mr. Rizzo. It is a beautiful, phenomenal event. So, I am very thankful that we got to see another one tonight. And I will hand it over.
All right, thank you. I was able to go, and I was honored to go. And I appreciate the staff and the students of AAES. They were all very, very respectful during the whole time. And the kids were so patient because, you know, they want to do other things. The art was phenomenal. I got to see the essays, I think it was third grade wrote, and the drawings that went with them. And I truly do appreciate it. Good job, Cougars. All right, so now we are going on to Victoria McGathen. I'm sorry, I just went going.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board and members of the community that are with us this evening, I'd like to call up Principal Alex Verduzco, who will also have some special guests this evening that he would like to showcase. And so, Mr. Verduzco, take it away.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Madam President, esteemed Board, Executive Cabinet, and Superintendent Kraus and guests. Today, we are going to present, Victoria McGathen is going to, well, I'm sorry. I'm Alex Verduzco, principal at Victoria McGathen Elementary School. And today, what we're gonna do is I have a group of students and a couple of my teachers that are gonna present an abridged version of what we did for Hispanic Appreciation or Hispanic Heritage Month Parent Assembly. And we have two groups of students. One is gonna perform a short song, very short. And right after that, we have a couple of students that are going to present a biography that they have also done on two prominent Hispanic celebrities, to say it otherwise. And so, they'll present with that. So, once the musical number happens, no applause, please, because the students are gonna come in. So, it's two fourth grade students. One is Lexi Baldorama, and the other one is Christopher Guevara. And so, they're gonna come up, present their thing, and then that's it. Then we can applaud. Thank you. So, with what to do, I guess, I'll just continue right now. We have Ms. Smith and fifth grade teacher, also DI teacher, Mrs. Sandoval. And they are having their students perform. Here we go.
He loves letting people know where he's from. He wears it on his chest and back every time. He puts on his Golden State Warriors jersey to represent the 95th Avenue in East Oakland. Juan Anderson's famous quote, "If I can change a life, my job is done."
Thank you, guys. Now, as you can imagine, when we did the celebration in the auditorium, we had another class also participate. So, we had approximately 100 students with flags going throughout the auditorium. So, it was a wonderful show. Thank you, everybody. You guys did a great job. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so, of course, we have to take a group photo up in the front. You can't escape it. Hey, we'll start with you, Trusty Webster.
We start on the other end.
You gotta pick on me eventually, right? There we go.
Oh, where is he?
Let's go ahead and do comments real quick.
A special thank you to Mr. Verduzco. I do have to say, I always love your presentations and your kids. You are phenomenal. You should be very proud. And parents, thank you. Thank you for sharing the amazing little joys that you brought into this world. So, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for supporting your students. Thank you for supporting AESD.
Thank you. Trusty Akas?
Well, thank you for coming tonight. That was very kind of you. This was beautiful. Your flags are amazing, and your energy is just contagious. So, thank you for coming. Thank you, parents, for bringing them. Please feel free to come to any board meeting in the future. And I want to see these kids back again. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Trusty La French?
Well, I thank you for this energy.
And microphone.
Sorry. I thank you for the energy that you brought here tonight. And if we could have another song next time we meet, we can make this something that we do every Tuesday. It would be wonderful because it would have us be hyped and get energy. And thank you very much.
Okay, I want to say that Victoria McGathen School always seems to pull off huge hits. I have been able to go to International Night, which I thought was a huge success, seeing so many families and seeing all the performances. It was wonderful. The fifth grade promotion, Mrs. Sandoval, the way it was decorated was amazing. And now this, it's always... And now this, it's always a joy to see, and I'm so proud. And I thank you, thank you so much for taking time out of your day to come here and do this for us. We truly do appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, so now we have to go on to the work part. So sad face. No, okay. All right, so we're gonna go ahead. I think that's it. Do we have anything else? That's it? Okay, that's it. So I will go on to four closed session declarations. We will be taking items four point zero two and four point zero three into closed session. Down to five public testimony before closed session. Do I have a representative from A D T A speaking on closed session?
I do not have a request for closed session, Madam President.
Okay, how about C S E A?
I do not have a request for closed session, Madam President.
Okay, do we have going on to five point zero three? Do we have audience members?
Let me refer to Ms. LeVey. Ms. LeVey, did you get any handwritten requests to speak this evening?
I do, but it's for open session. I do see someone that has, Stacy has put in for closed session, but that would have to be an open session item, so we can come back to her.
Okay, then. So then we will recess to closed session. Can I get a motion to, can I get a motion?
Eckes, I motion.
Eckes, and can I get a second?
LaFrench, I second.
Okay, call for the vote.
Trusty Webster?
Webster, I.
Trusty LaFrench?
LaFrench, I.
Trusty Eckes?
I.
Trusty Benz?
Benz, I. Motion passes four zero zero. The time is now six oh two. Seven point zero one, call to order. Seven point zero two, roll call and quorum establishment. And the time is now seven P M.
Trusty Eckes?
President.
Trusty LaFrench?
LaFrench, present.
Trusty Webster?
Webster, present.
Trusty Benz?
Benz, present. Quorum is established. There were no closed session items to report out, so now we move on to nine. Public testimony. Do I have a representative from A D T A?
Mr. Sinatra, do you see someone on Zoom from A D T A?
I believe Jennifer Radar.
Thank you, Ms. LeVey.
Welcome.
Mr. Sinatra, if you can ask Ms. Radar to unmute and welcome to the board meeting.
I do not see Ms. Radar.
Okay, well, we'll come back to her. Do we have a speaker from C S E A?
Madam President, I believe we have Diane Lynn.
Okay.
Mr. Sinatra, if you can ask her to unmute and welcome Ms. Lynn to the board meeting this evening.
Give me unmute now.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Well, good evening, President Benz, trustees, cabinet, classified staff, Mr. Kraus, certified staff, and all others attending this meeting. It's so nice to see our classified open positions being filled. I'm hoping we will have more vacancies filled soon. I am confident that the classified job fair played an instrumental part in hiring and filling our open positions. I would like to give a shout out to our H R department, Mr. Moran and his staff. Thank you so very much. I noticed that on this agenda, fourteen point twenty-five, certified personnel, certified substitutes, long-term incentive stipend. For years, we have always had an incentive for long-term subs. Beginning this year, our certified subs were not compensated for the extra work for long-term and all that they do, writing papers, report cards, lesson plans, conferences. At Georgia Magnet, we had an open position. I did ask four different subs if they would consider taking the long term. They all said no. When I asked why, the reply was, why should I take a long term with all the extra work and not get extra compensation? In reality, who really is losing because of this decision? It would be our students. Having different subs every day, it just doesn't work. I'm hoping fourteen point twenty-four is passed, so we can do what we do best. Educate our students to the best of our ability. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go with the speakers in-house and then the ones online. And we'll see if that gives Jennifer Radar time to get back online.
Great. Thank you, Madam President. Our first speaker, we'd like to welcome to the podium this evening is Ms. Teresa Berias.
Good evening, Board, executives. Please visit Columbia. Please. My son went to P E three times today because they didn't have enough subs to make sure that he could actually get an education. There's a kid that another teacher told me was in P E six times. They had one actual class today. We, as parents, are in the dark about what's going on with our school's administration. I was hoping that there would be a closed session declaration about that tonight. I waited a couple sessions because I know that personnel matters are really sensitive. And there are some things that have to be handled in a sensitive way. And we can't know what's going on in depth. But right now, we don't have a principal and we're down an assistant principal. We're down to one administrator. And I don't think most of our parents even know. Meanwhile, our kids are struggling. We don't have enough teachers for all of our kids. We don't have enough subs to cover for our lack of teachers. These are our kids' lives. These are their educations. Please visit Columbia. Spend the day. Don't just do a nice one-hour tour where you get to hang out with A S B and get to see the highlight reel. Spend the day on the campus, please. In lighter credit information, I just wanted to flag that the Mojave Air Quality Management District offers grants through the Mojave Environmental Education Consortium for environmental-related field trips, buses to environmentally related, again, field trips, and also campus projects like community gardens on our campuses. So I just wanted to flag that that is available for our kids, especially for the campuses. I know on Columbia's campus, we have a really huge patch of open dirt. And I think it would be really cool for our kids to have a garden. So just want to make everyone aware that that is something that exists. So again, please spend some time at Columbia. Our kids really need your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Madam President, we'd like to call Ms. Michelle Walden to the podium. Welcome, Ms. Walden.
All right, good evening, Board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. In my hands, you will see a stack of paper. This is how many classes are being subbed daily at Columbia. This many. In the seventh grade alone, we currently have six classes of history with a hundred and eighty-five students who have a sub. Science, nine classes. Two hundred and seventy-five of our seventh graders have subs. Special ed, language arts. I just found out one of our teachers is moving. She's transferring to another school. So now we're gonna have a sped language arts, six students, no teacher. A sped history with, again, no teacher, six students. Eighth grade is where we are getting hit the worst. Language arts alone, we have five classes, a hundred and fifteen students, no teacher. Math, five classes, a hundred and forty-nine students, no teacher. And that's because this teacher transferred. The stress has overcome all of us. Science, eighth grade, a hundred and seventy-four kids, five classes. History, four classes, a hundred and fifteen students. Our mixed grades. Our E L D A and B, who are our lowest band. We have a class, again, that math teacher who left. Thirty-three students. Special ed, E L D, that teacher is also transferring. Six students. Drama class, their first drama class on campus. Twenty-five kids, no teacher. Life skills, one class, thirty-four students. Language arts support, one class, eighteen students. All of these numbers are shocking and unacceptable. Every day when the day starts, Ms. Mariana and Ms. Rubio, as wonderful as they are, they have to sub forty-eight classes before the day even begins, and that's before any additional callouts. Teachers are calling out because they are stressed, they are exhausted, and they don't know what's going on. They have written admin, as you all know. Now down to security, as again, another security guard is just transferred. I have several other teachers who are saying they want to transfer. You guys keep saying you hear us, but you're not listening. The students are breaking up their own face. Security's not even getting there. They don't even know what's going on. Because we don't have adequate coverage when it's lunchtime. We have one bathroom that's open during lunchtime. Because security can't watch the other bathroom while they're at lunch.
Thank you, Ms. Walden.
Madam President, I believe Ms. Radar is now in the Zoom meeting. Mr. Sinatra, do you see her?
She is in. I'll ask her to unmute now.
All right, welcome, Ms. Radar.
I've asked her to unmute. Just waiting.
Hello? Can you hear me now? Okay, great. Thank you. I apologize. I was on my way to be there in person, and I'm still driving on the road. So I apologize for not being there earlier. I've been listening to my colleagues speak, and I'm sad and distraught, actually. Good evening, trustees, cabinet, superintendent Kraus, and stakeholders. I hope you know that I strive always to highlight the positive things that are happening in A E S D. But tonight kind of feels like a dumpster fire, honestly. Here are some positive things that I found to note. Our vacant positions in the district have been reduced from seventeen to only six. I'm excited to welcome the new teachers as soon as possible. Mr. Kraus has been extremely responsive to some of our immediate needs, specifically making sure that Chromebooks and Chromebook carts are being delivered to the sites that have requested them. Staff transfers have been handled efficiently and well, and teachers are being welcomed at their new sites with open arms. We are, after all, a family of teachers, and we support one another. We are, after all, a family of teachers and we support one another. And part of that support this week has come and is still coming in the form of breakfast and lunch being brought to all of our teachers at every site I'm tuning. It has been such a pleasure to visit the sites and meet not only, the truth is that you have hired gold standard people. Each individual at AESD is a valued member of this community and should be rewarded with gold standard treatment. Even our substitute teachers, they are so important to us. There is no underestimating the importance of the peace of mind when we have to be absent for whatever reason. Knowing that our students are being cared for and taught in our absence. Especially the long-term substitutes taking over an entire class with all the responsibilities of a regular teacher. I'm so glad to see that there is now a provision for an incentive bonus for the long-term substitutes. However, all is not well in Atalanta School District, as you've heard this evening. Student absentee rates are far too high. There seems to be an apathy towards school attendance. And we need to take steps to promote attendance again. Incentives such as perfect attendance awards and drawings and competitions will help get the kids to school. But teachers in schools can only go so far in promoting and rewarding attendance. There must be an intentional campaign from the district, perhaps with radio ads or billboard signs to raise awareness for the parents. Once a month, every administrator is away from their site at a management meeting during the day. A teacher in charge is in the office and a substitute teacher is in that class. As every admin everywhere is at a meeting at the same time. This occurs and the middle school students know precisely when it is. They own the school for at least those few hours. This was a practice put in place by Dr. Mitchell and he's no longer here. In the past, these meetings were held after the school day. Please bring back that practice. Our sites do need the leadership of our administrative management team. Or perhaps they're not as valued for their job at their school either. I'm here to tell you every member of AESD is an important piece of our puzzle and no one is in distress. As the programs we purchased are not working correctly, some students still do not. Show up and if they do show up to the Zoom class, they complete no work whatsoever. Some of these families has the same problems as last year's year. And the only result is that these students are falling farther and farther behind. They lack workbooks in every subject and the edge annuity training they were supposed to receive was actually only the promotional information. So the teachers still cannot utilize the program fully. There should be.
Hello?
Did we lose her?
Did we lose you?
Yeah, she just dropped.
Yeah, I think she said she was driving.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and go on to the next.
Yes, Madam President, we'd like to welcome Ms. Combs. Mr. Sinatra, do you see her in the Zoom meeting?
I am asking them to unmute now.
Great, thank you, welcome.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, great. Uh, good evening, AESD family. I'm here tonight to talk about. Our ailing family member, Columbia Middle School. Um, I have been a public school educator for thirty-four years, the past six of which I've taught music at Columbia Middle School. I used to really enjoy my job. I still do. Most of the time, I love the students who choose to study music. And I often open my classroom for tutoring or extra practice time. Sometimes just a chat or a quiet place to retreat before school or during lunch when it lines up with my lunch or my prep period. But I'm losing that opportunity because nearly every day now I'm asked to sub for another teacher during my prep period. And lately I've also had students added to my regular classes in groups of nine or ten from classes for which no subs were available. This morning I had ten language art students in my band class. That was an interesting challenge. We have unfilled teaching positions with full classes. We have teachers who are out on medical or other types of leave. And in a school that should have three administrators, we only have one who knows our staff and students. With occasional help from other district sites and and people will show up occasionally, but. Uh, we're frequently missing security and other staff members and we continue to lose more staff members to other schools in the district, which is distressing. It's beginning to feel like Columbia is being dismantled by the district. And it's very distressing. While I understand that certain issues are confidential and cannot be shared publicly. I would like to know when we start to consider these understaffing problems a safety issue for students and staff. When is it going to make a change in whether we stay open or not? I mean, when we have so few adults on campus. That we're shoving kids into PE classes and into band classes because we don't have enough coverage. When, when does that become a safety hazard and it's really a concern? Those of us who are here every day are suffering from exhaustion, mental exhaustion, emotional and physical because we're all overextended. We want to give our students our best. They deserve our best. But we end up shortchanging them and ourselves because of these extra demands. The students are losing instruction time and we're losing the opportunity to give the students the very best that they deserve. Even getting our classrooms cleaned and vacuumed is now down to just two days a week. I mean, it's not what our kids deserve. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Madam President, we did have someone earlier that had wanted to be in a closed session, but it was an open session and we have not seen them. In the meeting, Mr. Sinatra, if you could just look again for Ms. Lighton, do you see her? I know we had looked earlier for her.
I still did not see her in the meeting, no.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam President, that concludes our public comments this evening.
Okay. Okay, let's go on to ten cab cabinet re- reports.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, members of the community. I want to first thank our public speakers every time we have them, whether it's for open session or closed session. Uh, I know I can, I can tell you the cabinet hears you. We take copious notes, the board hears you. And we are actively speaking about Columbia, just to let you know, Mr. Moran and his team. And he'll speak to this maybe in a minute, all of the efforts that his team is working on to ensure coverage over there. Um, I will tell you that every day in the district, uh, we do have about fifty to sixty. Um, staff members out, teaching staff out on a daily basis, just to give you an idea of the. Coverage that we have to get. And unfortunately, in the high desert. The sub pool is the same for all the districts, Apple Valley, Asperia, Victor Valley, Union, Victor Elementary. So we're all pulling from the same pool of subs. Um, so we do try our best to keep those subs and this evening there's actually an agenda item. Where we are looking to keep some of our long-term subs and help them with their, uh, permits and credentialing. So I'm excited to. Have that item on the agenda this evening. Thank you to Mr. Moran and his team, uh, for helping us out with that. I do want to thank, uh, Atalanta Elementary School again for their presentation this evening, nine eleven and Victoria McGathin Elementary. For their presentation for National Hispanic Heritage Month. I had the opportunity to go over to West Side Park and and Principal Pantoja and all of the teachers and staff over there this week with. Doctor Dwezen and actually see a presentation over there for, uh, they did it up on the stage. The students came up there and did a great. Uh, song and it was just, you know, amazing to see. We even had a teacher who, uh. Admitted that he's never really been out there singing before. He grabbed the microphone and did a great job on the song that he sang, uh, Mr. Miranda. So I appreciated, uh, him getting up there and taking that courage to go up there and do that. So, uh, great opportunity to showcase. And then we had the opportunity to look in one of the rooms that showcased some of the artwork and other things that the students had created and and parents were there. This was exciting time. I do want to mention that, uh, we are, uh, actively looking at bringing a policy to our board, to the district related to Narcan. And fentanyl. If you're not aware of fentanyl, it's one of the most dangerous drugs in the United States and not, if not the world. Very small amount can kill you, uh, if you touch it. Or if somebody's exposed to it through, perhaps they think that it's candy because that's what we're starting to see, especially in the high desert. Where this drug is being incorporated into what looks like candy. But one of the things that is a lifesaver is this drug called Narcan. And basically if somebody's overdosing and if they get administered Narcan right away, it could save their life. And so there's an active push statewide. Uh, through a partnership with the state of California and the California Department of Public Health to ensure that all districts have access to Narcan. And we are actively working on a board policy. We will bring to the board for review. And then also our goal is to have Narcan available in all of our schools and then train our staff to be able to use that in the event that. Uh, God forbid, should there be an overdose, but it's another way that we want to protect our staff and our students. Uh, from this dangerous drug that's out there. It's, 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 it's just so dangerous and. I encourage parents to do research if you haven't heard of fentanyl and the effects of it and. We're also, uh, Dr. Dwezen and her team are going to be pushing out a lot of information related on how to identify it, how to mitigate, how to talk to your children about it. So. Um, and we're also working on that through our school site administrators of working with staff and students. So I wanted to mention that's such an important, um. Thing that we educate our community on as we move forward. I will let you know that, uh, coming up is, uh, fall break and our students will be getting, uh, some relaxing time and our staff will be getting some relaxing time. Um, October tenth through the seventeenth, uh, students is non-student days, October tenth through the seventeenth are non-student days. But on the seventeenth, we are providing, Dr. Dwezen will mention this, professional development for our staff on the seventeenth. And then all, all students and staff will be back on October eighteenth. So looking forward to a little, uh, rest and relaxation there. I want to thank, uh, Morgan Kincaid and Gus Franklin. If you look in the back of the boardroom on the walls there every month, we have a. Couple of sites that do decorations in this month. We are excited to, uh, have Morgan Kincaid come and decorate on one side of the room. And Gus Franklin on the other side of the room. So, uh, thank you to the staff and the students out there that, uh, helped make that happen. I also want to thank our transportation staff. I know it hasn't been easy this year, uh, with the, um. The amount of drivers statewide, there's a shortage of bus drivers statewide and and I really want to thank, uh, the transportation staff, the work that they are doing. Uh, the routes that they have to take, the extra work that they have to do in order to ensure that our kids are to school, uh, safely. And I appreciate all of the hard work that they do as well. And then last but not least, before I turn it over to, uh, our other cabinet members. Uh, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and so this evening I'm wearing a pink tie in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And, uh, if you know anybody that's been affected by that, it's a, it's a terrible disease. Cancer is a terrible, terrible disease. Um. My brother, uh, passed away two years ago from cancer. He would have been, uh, forty-nine this month. And so I, I, I'm a big advocate for any kind of cancer. Um, and and awareness is huge for me. And so I, I appreciate if you can help spread the word on, on helping find a cure and and just educating people on, on. Uh, early detection. I think for anyone that that you know, it's a, it's a great opportunity, just encourage them to. Uh, seek out an annual physical and and make sure that they're doing what they need to do on that. But, um. Just want to bring that up for awareness for the month of October and that concludes my comments. I'm now going to pass the, uh, baton to Dr. Dwezen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. So, good evening, Board President Benz, Board of Trustees, AESD staff and community. I'm excited to share, uh, a few highlights from our academic services division this evening. So, uh, last Thursday, we held our first district advisory council of the year. Um, we had a great meeting, learning about the role of D, of DAC. Um, with a little over twenty people in person and online. Um, so all of our meetings this year are hybrid. So we welcome any and all visitors. We look forward to our next meeting next month. Where we will have nomination and elections of officers for the school year. Um, tonight you will see two board policies up for review, the first being the second reading and, um, approval. For independent study and a first reading on the updated board policy and administrative regulation for bullying. Um, academic services is committed to bringing, uh, the board policies, bringing them up to date. And so you will continuously see those and, uh, Mr. Kraus already alluded to the Narcan. Um, and making sure that, um, our students are safe. So, um, those two are on the, um, docket for tonight. On Monday, October seventeenth, uh, we are proud to host our second professional development day for the year. Um, that, uh, board, you have a copy of the agenda for the day. Um, you, at this PD, we will engage all teachers in peer alike discussions around early literacy. Math, educational technology, um, English language development, PE and SEL. So we invite our board members to attend and drop by. It'll be at Melva Davis on the seventeenth. We begin at seven thirty. With breakfast in the quad and will end by two thirty that day. Um, I have also shared a flyer with you that we will be releasing, uh, to the public. It's actually probably already on the website. Um, for our school choice applications, we're going to start that process earlier this year. We're going to open that up in December. Um, and so we're excited at already gearing up. It's weird. We have one foot in this year still, but we're already gearing up for next year. So. Um, that's coming. And then I just would like to take this time to thank, um, our academic services team. Uh, business services and HR for the collaboration. Um, it's been a, a fast first quarter of the school year, but we are excited at what's to come and we just thank everyone. Um, for their collaboration and teamwork and we want to wish all AESD staff a restful fall break.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, President Benz, trustees, Mr. Kraus, district colleagues and community members. Again, thank you for the opportunity to have a share. So I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, Dana and Alejandro from our HR office who attended the. Fall Festival at Hook Park this past Saturday. Uh, they had a table there promoting our district with their new, uh, EZ Up Ten that had our district logo on it. Um, they interacted with hundreds of community members and made connections with the outside agencies that were present. Um, there. Besides it being a beautiful day, uh, I know they had a little challenge with the wind. Um, uh, we also, uh, the HR is, is offering a second full day orientation for at Wes. At West Creek Elementary for our, uh, teachers that are in PIPs or STIPS, uh, permits. Uh, Vicky Bell, our induction program agency rep and Dana Curtis will be working with our new teachers. On, on supporting them with signing all of their application documents, uh, so that they can, uh. Move forward in getting their preliminary, preliminary credential. So I'd like to thank them for that. Uh, in addition, I'd like to announce, uh, that USC's. Uh, School Leadership Academy is offering and recruiting, um, their program. Want to announce to our certificated teachers about a flyer that we will be sending out tomorrow. Uh, USC is currently recruiting for their new cohort for anyone interested in obtaining a preliminary administrative services credential. Uh, this credential would allow you to seek administrative positions in the district. The next cohort runs from January twenty twenty-three through May of twenty twenty-four. It's a fifteen-month program. Fully online, two nights a week, and it's designed for working professionals with guided field work. So if you're interested, uh, please look for that flyer that we will send out tomorrow. Um, I do want to quickly address the, the question about subs. So currently. In our neighboring high desert communities, um, Atalanta has, uh. The highest street, uh, for day-to-day subbing at two fifty. Uh, Victor L, Victor Union, Apple Valley, Asperia are at, are all at two fifty a day. Oro Grande is at two twenty-five, Hellendale is at two hundred a day and Snowline is at two hundred. In regards to long-term rates, only four of the eight currently offer a long-term rate. Uh, Victor L at two seventy-five, Apple Valley at two seventy-five, Oro Grande at two seventy-five and Snowline at two twenty-five. So as, as several people have mentioned, there is a board item tonight. That will increase it and the long-term rate will be, uh, the best in the high desert. So I hope that this will alleviate some of the concern. I do want to say thank you to the teachers. And staff helping to support the coverage. Uh, you know, our, our job in HR is, is, uh. Is sometimes challenging. I'd like to share some numbers. Uh, today we had sixty-nine total absences. Of those sixty-nine, thirty-three were regular absences, meaning the other thirty-six were for, for other, other. School business related items. Um, fourteen were unfilled. And, uh, you know, that's where the challenge comes in. Last Friday, we had, uh. I'm sorry, yesterday we had seventy-nine total absences with fifty-one. That were unfilled, those are regular absences and we had nineteen unfilled. So. You know, those are some of the challenges that we are facing. And so, you know, I, I, I want to assure the staff that we're doing everything possible. Um, to, to fill those, those positions. I know sometimes we just can't, uh, for whatever reason, subs. Substitute employees also take days off. That's unfortunate. And so, you know, if, if this item tonight passes. Uh, I hope that this will put a dent in. I hope that this will put a dent in in the number of openings we have each day. And as as Mr. Kraus mentioned, you know, I know the fall break is coming, you know. We want everyone who's off that time to get their well-deserved rest. We understand your job is very important and hard, especially in these circumstances. And so we want to assure you that we will continue to work hard to do everything we can to recruit more substitute teachers, get them trained. And I know Dana and Alejandro and our staff are working as 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 hard as they can, recruiting, talking to people to to sign up. We're we're looking at at even tonight, there's another item regarding hiring teachers on PIPs and STIP permits, which is which is allowed by EdCode in California. So those are a lot of positions that are being filled tonight. So, you know, our number now is down to six vacancies, vacant positions. And again, I just wanted to assure all of us that we're moving forward with the hopes that we will be able to to get to a good point where we're filling in all of our vacancies. And again, thank you for listening tonight. This concludes our HR comments.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to eleven eleven government governing board men members, reports and announcements. We'll start with trustee Webster.
Okay. All right. So the challenge. Good evening, everybody. Thank you. You're welcome. Very welcome. Communication is a word that I don't feel gets nearly enough credit in our society. Communication opens doors for growth and it also opens doors for acknowledgement. I do want to say thank you to everybody who came out and communicated with our board tonight. I also want to say thank you for bringing this to our attention. It allows us to have a better perspective of the day-to-day. I do want to make a special thank you to my cabinet team. I was aware of what was going on, and I do want to make a good thank you to Mr. Kraus as I was aware that not only him, but other cabinet members took substitution classes in the last couple of weeks, correct? Okay, so I do want to say thank you to all involved. This is a process and we are still healing. And our district, along with every other district, was challenged with adversity in the last few years. It's not an excuse, but it is an understanding that we do have to get back up. We have to walk together and remain as strong as we did in the years that we were faced with adversity. So I do want to say thank you to all of my A E S D teachers, staff and students. And I appreciate it. As we continue to move forward, we continue to communicate and we continue to understand how we as a district can grow and get better. So thank you for your time tonight, and I can't wait to see some of you out there.
Thank you. Trust trustee Ekis.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything because I wanted to keep the meeting short, but I I I'm human. I have to speak. I think we have proven time and time again that we are here. We listen. If anybody thinks we just come to these meetings on Tuesdays and go home and live a happy life, you're wrong. Being a board member is a twenty-four-seven job. We don't take vacations. We don't. We don't get time off. Things happen every day, every day of the year, every day of the week. I've had people ask me, don't you go on trips during the summer and stuff? No, we are board members. We work through the summer. We work through the good times, the bad times. We are always working because we love our job. We love what we do. And we totally care, or we would not be here. It would be easier to just run away, walk away. No, we love this district. We love our teachers. We love our staff. And we are constantly trying to improve and develop. And I'm sure most people know there is a huge teacher shortage in California. All these problems are not just us. It's everybody. And we hear about it constantly. We do the best we can. There's not a lot of teachers out there. There's a lot of them are retiring. They're quitting. They're transferring. We can't make people stay. So we're doing the best we can to keep our district solvent and keep it going. And we want teachers. We want our classrooms filled. We want teachers in the classrooms. It's hard on the kids. I know personally, when my kids were younger, my teacher, son's teacher was out almost the whole year. And it really hurt my child's education and I was devastated as a parent. But we got through it and we survived and things happen, life happens. So when you hear a lot of this negativity, I understand it. I get it. And if I need to talk to people one-on-one and try to explain to them on my level, what I think is going on, I'll be happy to do that, but I won't do it at a board meeting. But I just want you to know, we do listen. We do care. We've proven that. If there's a problem and it's brought to us, we are all over it and we will fix it immediately if we can. If we can't, we will do the best we can until we can fix it. I just want the teachers to know you. We are thinking of you all the time. We're very aware of all the situations that are going on in our district and how it's affecting you. We may not be in the classroom. It may not be that close and personal. But then again, you're not where we are in knowing what we know and what's going on. So you know, there's we got to just give each other the benefit of the doubt, give each other some credit and just pray for the best. Again, we love this district. We love our employees and we are doing everything we can to keep things going and keep them good. I really don't want any more teachers to transfer, leave, retire. But again, you can't make anybody do anything. We're I'm just asking that you please give it a second thought. We need you. We love you. We appreciate you. As far as visiting schools, I do visit Columbia. I have been there several times. I know what's going on. But again, I'm only one person and I report back what I see and hear. And while I'm there, I try to help. So you know, we're a family. And if you have issues and problems, you're more than welcome to come to us, talk to us. We will do the best we can. But please know we do care. We are working hard. We're always on top of things and we are not blind to any of this. And I do appreciate the phone calls, the emails, the texts, people stopping and talking to me. Communication is extremely important. But tonight, I just really want to reiterate that we do care. We love this district. We are on it twenty-four-seven. It is on our hearts and minds all the time and we are doing the best we can. And I just pray that our family will stick together, get us through this. And I know things are going to be awesome. There's so much hope and so much beauty. And I know a lot of you don't see it right now, but as a board, I know we do. And I am very encouraged about the future. So I'm just going to stay positive the most I can and just keep praying for our district. And again, just know we do care. We really care. If if it doesn't look like we don't, I don't know where that's coming from. But talk to us individually. You know, you may catch us crying on your shoulder. But then again, we may turn around and and inform you of all the beautiful things that are coming. So just want to throw that out there for people that maybe don't turn tune in normally on Zoom. We're not that bad. I think we're an awesome school district. I love this district. I think everybody's doing an awesome job. Families have hard times and we stick together during those times. And I think we're going to pull through it and I think we're going to do amazing and I already feel we are. So yeah, we're having a couple bumps in the road, but we're getting through it and I know we can get through it together. And again, I appreciate everybody. We love our teachers. We love our administrators, our staff, our employees, all of you are our family and we care about every single one of you. So just wanted to throw that out there. Lots of love and just know that we are here for you and we care and we are listening. Thank you.
Trustee LaFrenche.
Well, I don't know how I'm going to come behind Holly saying all of that. I do want to say good evening to everyone. And I do want to say that sometimes as a parent of a child in this district, being on the school board, you look and you say to yourself, I am going to come in here and I am going to change it tomorrow. I have spent many days, many days, even here crying, thinking, what can I do to help? What can I do? I'm a teacher first. I teach. I have schools now that classrooms cannot open because there's no one to teach those children. We are suffering in head start. I am suffering here at the district because we do not have teachers. I opened up my email and my telephone. If you have any suggestion, then talk to me like Holly. Talk to me one-on-one. I'll tell you my story as a parent that works fifty hours out the week, that dedicates my time to this school district to do anything that I can do. Walk through the classrooms. I have been to Columbia. I even tasted the water at Columbia. Because when I hear you say, go here, go here, I say, okay, I'm going to use my vacation time. When I take off work, I take off my vacation to go to support my schools. I love this district. I have two children go through this district. So it's not that I don't care. It's not that we don't care. Right now, as a board, we're doing everything that we can. But if you have a suggestion for me, email me, call me. I will take that suggestion that you have and bring it up the ladder. Just call me. It's not that I say, uh, thank you for coming. I hear you. And that's just like a saying that I say. No, because the more that I talk, the more it's hurtful to hear that we don't have teachers or to hear that someone is in P E for half the day and things of that nature. If you have some suggestion, bring it to us. I have an open ear. I have a I won't say open door policy because I don't work here per se. But I do. Send me an email and make contact with me. I'm open for any suggestions. Everyone have a wonderful fall break that I don't have. I'll be working next week. But please take that time to regroup, to rest, to I always say when you're in the trenches and you have, you know, so much going on, when you get that time to rest, don't be like me and watch TV half the day, right? Actually get some rest, you know, so you can have that energy because those children, they depend on all of us. They truly do. Thank you and have a restful fall break.
Thank you. I am going going to not say words. I we have Jen Jennifer Raid Raider on the phone. And I am go going to ye yield three of my min minutes for her so that she can fin finish what she wants to say.
Mr. Sinatra, if you could ask Ms. Raider to please unmute and welcome her to the meeting.
Ask her unmute now. Just waiting.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that very much. I just wanted to finish my remarks and thank you. Probably the one number one concern for all of our teachers is class size with the amount of behavior problems and severe deficit of skills. Most teachers are teaching a range of reading levels that goes as low as kindergarten, even in the middle school grades. With teachers having to prepare lessons and instruct for a range of at least five to six different levels in a single class, having the classes packed fully means that teachers' time and attention are fragmented. Class disruptions are constant. I cannot imagine another job anywhere where the clients intentionally and repeatedly interfere with the transmission of the job being done for them. So this, we can't find enough credential teachers because we make significantly less ten thousand dollars for less than neighboring districts. To Zedland with the most challenging district students and salary.
Ms. Raid Raider, you're break breaking up.
And hire less qualified people at teachers' wages. A credential matters. We are not baby's emails. I don't think she can hear me. Sorry.
No, it's okay. Your 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 judge just breaks.
The terrific projects and lessons that your teachers are putting testament on today's. And our coffers are accumulated monies of many years, all those years, as the students were getting there. And we have high reserve because of it. For a change, let's spend on this year's students. We have the potential of being counselors. We lack enough psychologists. We lack enough teachers. Teachers are leaving our district for other districts too. It's not enough to say, let them go. They don't care about our kids. They but you can only abuse people for so long before they reach the breaking point. Let's make A S D the envy of the high desert rather than a stepping stone to other districts. Thank you.
Okay, thank thank you. Okay. That is it for governing reports. Let's go on to twelve staff reports and presentation business services. Twelve point zero zero one re review of the dis district pool ren ren renovation by P B K R Architects.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board, members of the community this evening. I'd like to call our partners up to the podium and I'll be going out there to also work with them on the presentation for our district pool given update. I'm going to have them introduce themselves while Mr. Sinatra is pulling up the pool presentation for us.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and senior cabinet and the community members present in person and online. My name is Lisa Cox. I am a principal architect from P B K Architects and happy to be joining you this evening to give you the progress on the the pool renovation project that we're preparing for this district.
Great. And also, just want to
Hi, I'm Mike Woods with CPM. I'll be the construction manager.
Thank you, Mike. So the board had approved CPM a while back to work with our partners on the pool. And then they also approved P B K to do the architect. So architecture report. So next slide, if you will, Mr. Sinatra. I appreciate you pushing these forward. So we want to give a visual representation this evening of the current status of our pool. It's been down for several years. There's many reasons why it is in the shape it has been in, but mainly over the last many years. At some point, it was transferred to saltwater from freshwater and saltwater, as you might know, corrodes a lot of the pipes, a lot of the infrastructure of a pool. And that is one of the issues that we faced among many others that the team of of the architects and the CPM firm have been working with Mr. Richard in our M and O department as well on how we can move forward and make this pool the the shining star of Adelanto. And so you can see there, that's the current picture before the water was drained. Next photo. And you can see again just what it looked like before we drained the water, but just kind of the situation that we're facing as far as the status of the pool itself. It's a fairly large pool, a very nice sized pool. And I know in the past, people have really enjoyed using it. And so we're going to bring that back. Next slide. So this is the pool building. This is part of our renovation as well. You'll see some renditions here in a few minutes of what we think this all could look like. So next one. Here's our pool pump, and that's one of the issues too. In order to have a pool and a nice clean pool, you got to have a pool pump that works and that's updated and that does not have parts that are rusting due to salt and other corrosives. And so you can kind of see there that pool pump is very old and dilapidated. So that's part of the renovation as well. Next next photo. Here you see our bathrooms, our current bathrooms, the you know, ni- nice nineteen seventies, early eighties decor there. So you might find that in a in a house somewhere. But we're working on, that's part of the renovations as well as updating our bathrooms at the in the pool building. So excited about that. Next slide. So I'm going to now turn it over to Lisa because here is a nice rendition. Lisa, if you want to just talk about some of the things that you and your team have been reviewing.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. Kraus. So I'd like to share just the progress of of where we've come from the beginning of project through today, through our schematic design. We've met with our team and the district staff and reviewed the goals for the project, what the district is looking for in the way of scope, schedule and budget. Those are the three components of of every project that we pursue. We've done an assessment through visiting this facility and evaluating the the prior reports that were prepared, doing additional investigations and looking at what it would take not only to renovate this. and looking at what it would take not only to renovate this, uh, just in, in its finishes and features, but also in our code compliance. So there are components, as you might understand, over time, rules change. So when, when this project was built so many years ago, since then, a lot of the regulations have changed. So there are certain things that we will look at updating to comply with the current code through this process. And in some cases, those items can help, uh, be a way to improve the practicality and functionality of the space as well. We have a few renderings here, um, as well as a site plan. So this is just a general, uh, view of what of what it might look like. And I'll point out some of the features on the next slide. So looking at the overall site plan, one of the things I was talking about as far as code compliance, the pool currently has four ladders, the kind that you have to turn around backwards and climb into the pool. And those ladders are fine. Except, uh, by today's standards, you also need to have stairs that you can walk into the building. So we need to add stairs at a one component. So what we talked about is how this pool is used now. And I understand it's not used as a lap pool. It's more of a recreational lounge pool for a lot of children. So what we've done is we've take, we're proposing having the, the stair implement implemented along the whole southern end of the pool. So it allows a larger area for smaller children to lounge and enjoy the pool and creates shallower spaces for them to enjoy that. And it also provides the compliance necessary uh, through the, the local agencies as well. Next, please. This is a summary slide of the different components we're looking at throughout the site. We have existing light standards there with, um, old failing uh, lighting components. So those will be updated to LED, which will save, uh, energy and, and be more efficient in the way that they light that space for safety and security and in the evening hours. We'll replace the, the lifeguard towers and, um, the entire concrete deck as a whole, the existing concrete will be replaced. Another code compliant component is the perimeter. The current fencing around this pool is standard chain link fencing. And the size of the mesh that's on there is considered climbable, which makes it non-compliant with the local health department. So the fencing needs to be replaced. So this is one of the areas where we're offering options as we go forward. So we can replace it for a more economical option with another chain link that has a much tighter mesh. It's a one inch square, so toes can't fit in it and it's considered non-climbable. Or we can, um, enhance that by going to a block wall, which helps with screening and privacy for access to that use, but also complies with the non-clim- climbable component. Another nice feature that we're looking at is providing shade out there. There's a lot of open deck area which has great sun exposure, but, uh, most people who enjoy a pool like a little shade as well. So there's different types of shade options that, uh, are available. And what we're proposing is a uh, pre-engineered structure to help save costs. So this is something that's, uh, more readily available and, and, uh, predetermined. Uh, but we have some options there in looking at the roofing type. So it can be uh, mesh, a fabric roof that helps provide shade, which is a more economical option. Or there, uh, can be a pre-finished metal roof, which would also shield you, um, it'd, it'd be a stronger shield from the sun, but it also shields you from any inclement weather of rain, if you had that as well. Uh, depending on which approach you take and, and the available budget, we can, uh, showed out on one side of the pool or on both. Right now, what we're showing is a system that is cantilevered. So the columns are only on one side of the structure. So that leaves the area between of the shade and the pool all open. So there's nothing for any of the users to, to run into. The, the structures at the back and it, and it just hangs out over the pool deck. And then also on the building itself, um, there's currently an old drinking fountain. So that would be replaced with a, an accessible high-low fountain as well as adding a bottle filling com- component. Cause most people carry their water bottles around and this will be a, an easy way to to refill a water bottle as well. Okay, next slide. So as a part of our assessment process, we, um, with the assistance of the co- the construction manager, had a contractor go out and remove the vinyl liner that had been placed there uh, as a retrofit condition over the years to try to take a look at what the existing condition was below that. And here you can see a little bit of how that is. There's still a little uncertainty in what's beneath those layers, but we're anticipating those changes and planning for that, uh, in the, the future development. Next. So this is a proposed view of a similar angle of what you just saw. So in this version, it's showing the block wall perimeter with a gate to the, the northern grass area. You can see the, the lifeguard towers, the full stairs across the, the left-hand side there. And then this view is showing the two shade structures with the fabric tops. Next, please. Again, a view from the north to the south with the pool as it looks today. Next. And a proposed alternate. So in this scenario, it is the metal roof on the shade structure and the smaller diameter, uh, opening for the chain link fence. Next. Next slide, please. Again, just working through more angles of the same items. Showing the alternatives from the same view with different fencing type. What it does for screening to the, the preschool adjacent and where we would have that shade. Looking north with the chain link and just the metal roof structure on the left. Another angle. Again. So in these different renderings, it's, it's all very similar, but it shows you those few different options that we're looking at, uh, in the finishes here based on the final budget. CMU wall.
Before Lisa talks about the schedule, I, I did have to get a dose of reality from the architects and, uh, the, uh, CPM firm because I had a overly, I was very overly optimistic that we could get this done by next summer. That was the, and they will tell you that, um, they had to bring me down to earth because I did give them those instructions and, um, I got these weird looks like, are you kidding me? And so, uh, but I understand that there are time timelines and things that have to be done. And so they did a great job of creating a schedule. So Lisa's gonna give you a, a tentative timeline that the team has been looking at as far as the, uh, next steps in the process potentially.
Thank you. So as this shows here, these are our standard phases that any construction project goes or design, rather, uh, any design project goes through. You start with schematic design. And what I'm sharing you with you today is the conclusion of that schematic design effort and what we've done. The next stage is design development and the design development stage will go in and look a little more detailed at the systems, exactly what type of pool equipment it'd be. Uh, how, how that will integrate and work in making some of those final selections on finishes and materials. Uh, the next stage is construction drawings and specifications. That's where we get into the, the fine detailed line work necessary for a contractor to actually bid the project. So it comes with two components. There's a drawing component, which is the construction drawings. And then specifications is actually a, a book that describes, uh, literally every word of how those construction measures are supposed to be implemented, what finishes are supposed to be selected, how they're supposed to be implemented into the final construction of the project. And then once those documents are prepared, they'll be submitted to the city for review and approval, as well as the local, uh, health department through the county. And once both agencies have a review and approve of the project, then the documents will be put out to bid to your local contractors. Uh, that bid will be open and those awards will come back to you for approval. Once the bids are approved, then we enter the construction phase. Within the construction phase now, we have another element. It's always been there, but now it's much more prevalent than it used to be. And it's something called procurement. As we've seen with the pandemic in the last few years, getting a hold of almost anything is so much more challenging than it has ever been. So this stage in our construction schedule is much longer than it ever used to be, but it's, it's rightly so. We, and, uh, for us to assume that anything can be available sooner than that is, is, um, foolish, cause that is not our reality today. So this schedule gives quite a lengthy time. So from once the point, the project is awarded and the contractor gets on board, they provide all of their submittals. We get those reviewed and then they order. So they're not even actually starting work for quite some time while they're waiting for their supplies and materials to come in. And then the project actually begins, uh, and then the work can be completed and it'll be open. So with all of this in mind, we're looking at having it open um, late spring, early summer, uh, in twenty-four. May of twenty-four, April, May of twenty-four, right now. That is our current plan. And that's it.
Okay, Board, do you have que- questions?
Yes, I sure do. Okay, so one of my first questions is, uh, the walls. Are they gonna be, uh, higher or high enough so that people cannot, uh, climb over them from the outside?
So the requirement is a minimum of six feet. Uh, they can be taller if you so desire. The higher they are, the more they cost. Um, but they will absolutely be a minimum of six feet and non-climbable because that is the code requirement.
Okay, good. The reason why I'm asking is of course, as trustees, we're always worried about liability.
Absolutely.
So of course we want them nice and high so we can avoid any possible drownings.
Of course.
Okay, second of all, fabric tops, they don't do very well in our high desert. I know anybody who's gone out and bought in a gazebo or canopy made out of, uh, the fabric, it's gone within a couple of months, you know, and I know.
Clarify.
Yeah, I know you're talking heavy duty ones, but again, I'm thinking within five, ten years, they might be just completely shredded. But if you've got some kind of fancy, smancy ones, I'm good with that. If not, I'm thinking maybe plastic or metal. But I'm gonna, of course, that's your job. I just wanted to throw that in. Um, next, uh, the cement around the pool. I'm hoping it'll be pitted or designed where for slippage. You know, I, I'm not a big fan of the smooth cement where kids run and they're all over the place and everybody slips. So that is something I, I know I would personally like to see. Um, and then, uh, the feet of the pool. Is it gonna be, I think it's four feet now. I'm not sure. Is it gonna be a, a sloped? Uh, and how deep will it be?
So to speak to, to each of your items, um, starting with the structure, the structures that we're talking about are engineered for your winds out here. They're designed for those wind loads and, and structures are, um, are designed to take on the loads of, of those forces. The fabric obviously will have a much shorter lifespan than a metal roof structure will, but it comes at half the cost. So you weigh in, you know, life cycle. If, if you're shorthanded upfront on the cost, then that's a good alternative. But if you say, no, I want something that's gonna have a much longer lifespan and I can afford to take care of that now, then I would definitely recommend the metal. The fabric structures that we're proposing have a lifespan of about ten years. And then the fabric itself can be replaced and the structure will still last. The structure is still a pre-coated, uh, steel and is in great shape. You would just replace the fabric, uh, at that time. With regard to the finished surface, uh, it absolutely has to be non-slip. That's also our code requirement. So there's a, a certain coefficient of friction that we're required to comply with. So you definitely won't have any issues with, with slippage there. Regarding the depths of the pool, we are not changing that. Uh, so it's currently approximately three feet on each of the long, the short ends. And then it goes to about, uh, four, four and a half in the center. The depths are not changing. We are refinishing it. We'll have a new stucco finish in there. Um, also, I didn't mention earlier, uh, at, at the water line at the top of that, we'll have a new tile. So that's a good way to maintain the stucco. So it sits on a tile piece, which I'm sure if any of you have a pool at home, you'll see that's kind of a customary thing. This pool did not have that. So that's something that will be implemented as well. So the top portion around the interior will have a tile that's appropriate for, uh, the water type. And then the, the surface below that will, uh, be new stucco.
Okay, and then the foot of the, uh, footage that will also be labeled in the tile and on top of the cement. So you can see it from the top. Okay, great. I like that too.
Yes.
Um, last thing I just want to add, I don't know if you know the history of the pool. Um, it was put in many, many, many years ago when this district was very new. And it was put in by a superintendent who I believe was in the Navy. And one of his goals of our district was to teach every child how to swim. I believe that was in fourth grade possibly. And I thought that was amazing. I've never heard of a school district do that before. And I think it's wonderful because a lot of adults, a lot of people don't know how to swim. And if you can learn that and we can advertise that in our district, that's a big plus for everybody. That, and if we can implement that and have like every fourth, fifth grader, uh, with parents' permission, sign up to teach them how to swim. I was concerned about the depths of the pool, cause I know it was set up a certain way. And I do want us to be able to teach children how to swim in that pool if we can pull that together, cause that's pretty much what the purpose was of the pool. So if we can pull that off and make that happen, I think it's just a win-win for everybody. And I am super excited, cause I really want to bring that back, you know, having kids learn how to swim. So and then of course recreation in the summer. But yeah, how wonderful to be able to teach kids how to survive in water. So I'm excited. I really am. But anyway, I'm done with my questions and thank you very much. I'd like all your answers.
Uh, trustees, any other trustees?
No, I don't have any. Very thorough. Thank you very much. I do like the greenery without having those the brick wall. But that's the part down the line that you could say that for another.
Yeah, I have a few questions. Um, on your, your, um, slideshow, you mentioned how we need to update the bathrooms. You mentioned how we need to update the, um, different parts of this facility, but I'm not seeing a really strong representation of your idea for say our bathrooms or the back of our facilities. And in your displays, it doesn't look like you're putting too much effort into the building itself. Could you further elaborate on what your plans are for that?
She's looking for me because the, the original slideshow was, uh, at least fifty-five to sixty slides and
Emailed that one?
Yes, yes ma'am, absolutely. We just condensed it for the board meeting this evening. And, uh, but they did do an exhaustive presentation on the buildings more. There were several on the buildings that went very much into detail on that. Um, but for the sake of the presentation itself, uh, we did condense it to the Reader's Digest version, just to give a broad overview to the board and the community this evening. So that's why Lisa is, that's why Lisa is smiling at me.
It's your fault, Mr. Kraus.
I do have copies with me that I can leave with you as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, now I, you know, I am excite- cited. We have to be pa- patient. I know we, we want, wanted this done sooner, but I would prefer to have it done correctly so that it's for the long term. So that it's beyond us, you know, so we'll just have to be pa- patient. Thank, thank you.
Up to we go for like December twenty twenty-three?
Christmas time?
Why not? Merry Christmas. The schedule that we have is what we anticipate, but I, what I want to clarify is we're not taking our time to follow that schedule. We're doing everything as fast as possible. So if we can beat that schedule, we will. Uh, we're, there's just a lot of components of it that are outside of our control.
I got two more questions. Is it heated and is there lights in it?
Uh, there are not lights in the pool. There are lights on the pool deck.
Okay.
And, uh, the heater that is there now will be removed and we were told there was not a need to add it back in.
Okay, okay.
Could we?
It's additional cost, but yes, everything impacts a budget, you know.
We could go swimming in December.
I'm just saying.
Okay.
I'll stop. Thank you.
Are there an, any other que- questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Members of the Board.
Okay, so, all right, let, let's go on to third, thirteen, uh, adopt- adoption of the minute, minutes. Uh, thirteen, thirteen point zero zero one, board min- minutes approve as writ- written and ord- order filled. Reg- regular board me- meeting of Sep- September twenty seven, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve? Can I get a sec- second? Can I get a vote, please? Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee LaFrench.
I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz. Benz, I, motion passes for zero. Move, move, moving on to the consent agen- agenda, we are taking I'd, I'd items for fourteen point zero zero two through fourth, fourteen point third thirty minus I'd item four, fourteen point zero four that had been pulled prev- previously. Does Ann, any trustee want to pull an item?
No. I wanna pull fourteen point two four.
Okay, Trustee Webster wants to pull point two four. Does any other trustee you wanna pull? I do not. Okay, so I need a motion, motion to approve the remain. Motion to approve the remain meaning I. Items um mine minus four fourteen point zero four and four fourteen point twenty-four. Can can I get a mo- motion?
Eckes, I motion.
Can I get a sec- second?
Webster, I second.
And. And I get a vote, please. Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz. Benz, I, mo- mo- motion pa- passes for zero. Okay, go going on back. We're gonna do the I'd items pulled from the gen- agenda. So for fourteen point twenty-four, I need a mo- motion to approve.
Webster, I motion to approve and discuss.
Okay, and I need a sec- second. Love French. Okay, we're o- open for de- discussion, discussion.
I pulled this item mostly because I just wanted to make a special shout out to our cabinet for making this um come, come to light. I know this was a controversy that we had been discussing for a while, and I just appreciate all your hard work in bringing it here. Thank you, H R, I believe. Um, so thank you very much. And that's it. Can we take the vote? Okay. Can we take a bow?
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee uh La French. Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz. Benz, I, motion passes for zero. All right, go going on to six sixteen, Paul policy introductions, updates and read readings. Six sixteen point zero zero one act academic ser- services adopt and approve the se- sec- second read for board Paul. Policies sixty-one fifty-eight and add admin administrative reg- regulation sixty-one fifty-eight for. Independent study. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I second.
Okay, love French, sorry, and second, I guess. Okay, we're open for discussion, discussion. Hearing none, call the vote. Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee La French. Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz. Benz, I, motion passes for zero zero six sixteen point zero two academic ser- services. Approve the fir- first read of A E S D board policy. V P fif- fifty-one third thirty-one point two. And admin administrative regulation A R fifty-one third thirty-one point two bull- bullying. I need a mo- motion to approve.
I guess.
I need a sec- second. Webster. We're open for discussion, discussion.
I'm still so happy this is coming. Thank you.
Yeah.
We need this.
Yes, thank you.
And that's all I gotta say.
Okay, call for the vote. I'm I'm gonna take my time on this one. Trustee Webster.
Trustee Webster, I.
Trustee La French. Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz. Benz, I, motion passes for zero. Go going on to adjournment. I need a motion to approve.
I guess.
And I need a sec- second. Hey, please call for the vote. Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee La French. Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz. Benz, I, the time is now eight seven seven seventeen. The vo- vote is for zero zero. Please have a good night.
Right, Reid killed it tonight. Wow. Talk about getting better.
No.